Pastor McGrady.
Yes, sir.
Get us started.
Before I pray, I would just want to say, I know a couple of meetings ago, we asked for prayer for Tyrone. I just want to say, he's almost two months of not eating, but now he's back on solid food, he's at home, on the road well to recovery, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. So I've been kind of interceding on behalf of Tyrone, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, that prayer still works. Prayer still works.
Oh, he was very, very moved by the flowers.
Yes, yes, and Councilman-
And he said there were some apples and nuts in there, too, so it wasn't just flowers?
Yeah, I wanted to send pizza, she sent fruit and nuts. So, yeah, and he was very appreciative, very appreciative of that. And he had made up in his mind, just one touch, he had made up in his mind, he had said until cooler minds prevailed, that he was even going to try to come tonight after his second treatment. What actually set him back was the first treatment. So I was on the phone with him, and Melissa came by-
He aggressively encouraged him to-
Not come tonight.
Stay home.
Yeah, so you'll hear from, but I just wanted to let you know that. I just wanted to let you know.
Appreciate it.
We pray all the time, but we need to hear the witness and the testimony of the recovery and what God is still doing in this time. Let's pray. Father, we thank you, we bless you, we magnify your holy name, we give you all the glory. We thank you, God, that you are yet and still a healer. Father, you renew and you restore. Father, you take care of the sparrows, the birds in the trees, God, and we say thank you that you take care of us, God. We thank you that your word says, and we believe, that we are fearfully and wonderfully made, God. So, Father, we say thank you. And, Father, I pray for these elected and appointed officials tonight, God, that your wisdom, your knowledge would lead them, God, as they do do the business for this city, God, because we know all authority and all the power is ordained by you. We thank you, Father, and we bless you. In Jesus' name I pray, with faith believing. Amen.
Amen.
Let us all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff. The only one signed up for speaking tonight is April Mathis from the Old Town Business Association. Item number one, discuss the distance requirements in the Hyrum Downtown Historic Overlay District. Jody?
Well, that was an agenda item requested by Councilmember Carol.
Can't hear you.
That was an agenda item requested by Councilmember Carol.
I thought we'd have a visitor to speak on, to speak on that.
Well, generally, they would see the item on the agenda, and they would speak prior to the item being discussed by Mayor and Council. But if you've got points that you want to ask about the distance requirement, or, I mean, we can still do that, or you can move on.
Yeah, no, we can discuss the distance requirements. So I understand, is it 500 feet?
It is. There, we were talking earlier tonight that there are some other references to distance, like there's between, if it's within 1,000 feet, there's a variance that could possibly be applied for. I will need to refresh my knowledge of that, because it's been a while since anyone has really, a while since I've delved into it. But yes, there is a hard threshold of 500 feet restrictions on like businesses. And it's possible, too, that the person who is making application to be there, if they were to define their business more fully, as opposed to just saying it's a salon, that there may be some other consideration that can be given. Similar to restaurants, you know, you could have one restaurant, and somebody comes in, but you've got olive tree, which is Greek and Italian, where you might have affectionate cuisine, totally different menu, different type of cooking, so that is allowed, because they're not the same thing versus two salons. And we don't equate barbershop, which we also have, two salons, just because it does hair. So there's distinctive differences that could be pointed out, and that might be an option, but until they decide to fully define what they are, I can't really consider it.
So what are the next steps? Does the salon owner or the, I forget what her position, I'm sorry?
The property manager.
Property manager.
I'll be happy to talk with her. She has not called me yet.
Okay.
But I'll be happy to speak with her and give her some points on the matter and educate myself further on it.
She hasn't from the business license yet?
No, she hasn't.
I don't know the business description.
Okay.
And that might make the difference, but just on the surface of it, if you tell us that, same thing with a, if another barbershop came in, would be the same answer. I mean, that's what we've got down there. If Thresher Coffee was there and another coffee shop wanted to open up, it would be the same answer. It's like you need to be outside of 500 feet distance, and the purpose behind that is to ensure that you didn't end up with just a bank of the same thing in such a short space, because the Historic Overlay District is a small area. Still, it could expand in the future if people chose to do so with further development or future redevelopment, and then that 500 feet becomes less of an issue, and people do want to space out more.
Okay, I understand. All righty, well, I will get with the property manager and discuss the next steps and what we need to do.
Is there anything that council needs to do? Because there are two similar businesses adjacent, well, not adjacent, but diagonally across within 90 feet. They're both hair salons.
You're absolutely right.
This one is going to be, I think, on B, and I spoke to Jill, the property manager, and she was very thorough in her description of the business, and she's taking proactive measures in getting businesses into our downtown area. That place has been vacant for three years. It's a different clientele. I spoke to the owner of Painted Lady. There doesn't seem to be-
Painted Roots.
Painted Roots.
Painted Roots Down.
Painted Roots. That's the only reason I asked. Painted Roots, that makes sense now, now I remember Roots. So, an exception was, well, they are operating a business outside of this ordinance, so maybe we should take a look at the ordinance and see what changes need to be applied.
I will just say flat out, a mistake was made by allowing the second salon to locate where it was, but that was done, and there's no point in going and making that applicant pay for a mistake that was made. It's human error, which is, it just happened. But if what has been talked about is going to occur, which is a relocation of one of the salons is going to be moving outside of the Historic Overlay District, then we're back to a point of being compliant with the ordinance.
Well, those two, the new, the existing business, the hair salon, Painted Roots, and the other salon will still be within 500 feet?
If somebody were to come in after this other salon, which is already established downtown, determined, they've determined that they're going to move to another location within Hyrum, but they will not be in the downtown anymore, then the current salon would be compliant. We have no issues. If a second person came along wanting to locate a similar business, general answer would be, you can't do that within 500 feet. But if they've got something that's distinctively different about them, then an argument could possibly be made that it's a different type of business. We would have to know, but I'm just guessing right now.
Okay, and as far as legal repercussion, would we face, do you think, if this, if we allowed or granted this business to operate, Painted Roots, and the new applicant is denied, would we be subjected to any type of little legal repercussions for not allowing another business within similar nature?
I wish we'd sue about something. That's what lawyers did the other day.
So you're going to say, yeah, okay.
I mean, obviously, it's a possibility, but I think if it was, and I don't know the facts, the facts particular enough, I'd have to get with everybody to find out. But, I mean, I wouldn't be overly concerned with that if it was a clerical error, let's say, if there was a mistake that was made, and you're otherwise in compliance, then I think you'd still be able to enforce the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to ask you, when did we come up with that overlay district? Because we came up with rules like-
It's been in place for, it's been over five years since, I think it's five years since we did that.
So, since we came up with the overlay district, because that's the only district where those type of rules, 500 feet, apply, because any other place, you know, you can't, there's no restriction on that. I'm thinking outside of the overlay district, restrictions on something as alcohol and liquor stores, that's the only thing that can't be, so many feet. I guess my statement is, maybe we need to look at our over, our downtown overlay district and maybe make some adjustments to things, because like you say, some of those businesses or buildings have been empty for quite a while, and so we don't want to deter anyone coming down there, because our overlay district is kind of restricted. So we obviously make some adjustments to that.
Council has the right to do that, yes.
Okay, we'll discuss it. Discuss the employee handbook, and make some changes. Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You received a packet in your email, or virtually the copies, but I gave you hard copies, too, to look through, because I know it's a lot to compensate. We've had, the original handbook that we are currently under has been in place since 2015. We've had additions that are now listed in the handbook I gave you, that have been added throughout the years, but never added as a policy inside the handbook. So those where I've said were already current policies, that I just added the wording, those are policies we already are handing out on separate sheets during orientation, that you've already voted on as a council, like the media policy, the fraudulent policy and stuff like that, and I just moved those words into the handbook, so instead of having hand out separate things. But I wanted to go over, this has been a project that I started working on for part of my HR certification, and when I started this, it brought me a lot more awareness as to what are we really needed to have more in our handbook. So it's section one, just to give you some highlights of things that really just, to me, are important that we need to address, to give you ideas, things to think on and read. Item 107 was put together as merely as a starting point. That's the, good, the structure, basically. I just put that together, like a general way to do it, to put it in the handbook, so we could modify it as needed, and we just need to adjust it based off the one that Jody has organized lately. Section two, most of the section two has either been reworded or added. One of the policies we've added is the required breastfeeding support policy that we had to have, and also a HIPAA clarification section. So those are just merely words and stuff that legally we needed to add to our handbook. Section three, or most are general practices that we've been doing, but just were not in writing in the handbook. Section four, some are already common practices also, but not in formal writing, but also some are added to give options for future practices. So they may not be actually implemented at this point, but by go ahead and putting that type of wording into the handbook, it gives us the option to do that type of work at a later date. Section five, with employee standards of conduct, item 504, we address the casual work dress policy. It just adds the option of jeans to daily wear, Monday through Friday, instead of Fridays only, unless they have a meeting or required to represent the city in some fashion. It also talks about in section 504.8, the city logo wear. I put that in there as an option that can be decided by the council, as it needs to be added regarding wearing city logo items when not representing the city, like going to a bar or the grocery store, they should not be wearing city logos, to me, as a representative, because at that point, your behavior is still a representation of the city.
So if you have one on during the day, and you want to stop and get groceries?
Well, no, no, I mean, just, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about like social hour in the evenings and stuff like that, on the weekends, you know, to me, just there needs to be some clarification, because we have now uniforms for politeworks and sanitation, so if they don't go home, they go out, and they're still in their, you know, I just want some type of clarification, and that's why I said it can be reworded however you see fit. Item 512, the travel policy. This was wrote up way before the discussion started on the, putting a travel policy in place. This was just something that I had researched, how other municipalities did for clarification for their employees when they have to travel for training, just so it's in writing for the employee to know exactly what's expected of them and everything. Section six has several items added. One of them, in section, item 605, the terminal pay, that allows a higher PTO payout for employees that have served over 20 more years of service, or they're able to retire after 10 years of service, which gives them up to 12 weeks of PTO payout instead of the normal six. That was put in there just merely as a retention item. Later on, you'll see that I took out the maximum accrual, that we took away, I took out the rollover, because currently, we're only allowed to maximize 240 hours per year for employees other than PD, and PD is 256. By doing so, anything that's over those hours, it goes into an extended leave bank. But that is basically only six weeks of pay, which doesn't even cover an employee if they're out for Family Medical Leave Act, which is up to 12 weeks. So to me, if we had an employee, let's say, even whether it was a spouse or the wife that worked for us, trying to go out on FMLA for maternity leave or anything, since there is no paid leave for that, it allows them to build their bank up to where they can take off if they need to, more than just the allowed six weeks. But by getting that, also, we took out the item where you can only get paid out still the maximum of 240 or 256 upon leaving, except for if you're employed less than a year, I added that there is no PTO payout if you're employed less than a year with the city. Longevity pay, which is item 613, is already currently in practice, it's just putting it in writing. Section seven, item 702, on there under the bereavement leave, I specified spouse, child, and parent, and included up to five days of bereavement leave instead of three. I think when you lose a parent, or a child, or a spouse, three days, to me, is not a lot to take, to put everything in place, handle the situation, and then bounce right back to work. So I think as a courtesy to our employees, if they experience that loss, five days, and then sufficient PTO if needed after that, but any other family members defined would still remain the three days. Item 703 has already been approved as entered by the council, that's our holiday schedule, that was already approved after I had started typing up the handbook, so that's already been changed in the handbook. 704, removed maximum accrual, like I mentioned, to allow PTO accrual to carry over each year without loss to the, allow at least 12 weeks of accrual for FMLA needed. And also, beyond the 15 years of service, I added additional accrual, because right now, our current handbook stops at the 15-year mark, there's no more additional accrual. And to me, if we're trying to promote longevity with the city, and we've already are in the process of looking at our retirement at a 25-year cap, if we want to try to keep that employee for 25 years versus 15, we need to give them something to keep working towards. And the PTO is something, we would still have the max payout unless they get over that, you know, to 20, 25 years. Also, we currently have one PTO payout per year, which is a 40-hour PTO payout. We've had conversations with police, how they are not able to take time off at certain times of the year. So I already talked to our auditor about possibly adding an additional PTO payout, where you could offer up to 80 hours, and it could be taken at one time a year, or it can be split 50/50, 20/80, however the employees choose to do it, over a course in June and November. So it just gives a second option to use money for vacation if an employee needs it, and like we do currently in November for Christmas spending. Item 707 reinforces that PTO must be used when absent from scheduled work dates. We've had a bad problem of employees that accrue PTO, and they'll take a scheduled day off, but they don't use their PTO, and we need it in writing that that's a requirement, that they're utilizing that PTO instead of just banking it. Item 709 is a wage continuation option that I've added, that allows compensation for employees that are out due to a work-related injury. It gives them their full salary for the first seven days. Workers' comp will not pay for a work-related injury for seven days. That's a long time for an employee to go without a paycheck. Workers' comp, if they're out longer, will pick up on the eighth day at 70% of their salary, but will not pay for those first seven days until they've been out 21 days. So my continuation program basically allows us to continue paying that employee for the first seven days. If they're out over 21 days and they're reimbursed for that seven days, we can do payroll deductions when they return to work to recoup that seven days if we need to. But it also gives them the option that they currently don't have, to compensate that 30% of lost income with PTO hours they've accrued. So that way, they can, they'll still get 100% of their salary, 70% from workers' comp while they're out, 30% from PTO, but they'll be covered for those first seven days. I've researched multiple cities throughout the United States, seeing about what policies they have in place, and I don't have the actual numbers, but a lot of them actually have it in their handbook as an option that's available. Our city, I don't think it would actually, we've had two injuries, one, though, was sufficient that he was out a while, that that seven-day pay was a long time to be without pay. It also allows their payroll deductions to continue for their employee-paid benefits, because if we don't have, where they're getting a check from us, which the way it is currently now, they don't get that 30% of PTO usage, we don't have any payroll deduction. So not only are they banking what they owe us after they return for their benefits, but they elected a benefit, the ones elective benefits that they take out, but it also, it puts them behind catching everything up, because they don't, after so many days, they don't even start to, if they're not, if, our current handbook reads, if they're out after so many days with no pay, PTO accrual stops. So by them still having a check, because to me, I don't think an employee should be penalized for a work-related injury that occurred during their line of duty.
They shouldn't use their PTO time to make up.
Yeah, and currently, we don't have that in our policy, which they could do that to compensate that 30%.
That's what we have to do, we get our vacation time and PTO time.
Yeah, yeah, and sadly, one of the reasons I started researching this was, we had an officer that had not accrued enough time to use, and he was out in those seven days, he had no PTO or anything. So that is one of the things that, you know, and we can restrict it just to a certain department also. I just think that it's something we could reword or modify, but we need to make sure that they are allowed to use PTO, is that other 30% also. And then allow them to use it if we choose to do it for the first seven days, so. So item 70909 is in there, but I'm going to, I'm requesting that it's being moved to replace what I'm going to discuss later about our long-term disability being replaced, because it won't be an option if that is to happen, to occur. And then section eight, it speaks for itself. Section nine just puts the actions that have already been put in place over the last year in writing. Section 10 is pretty much self-explanatory. Section 11 is just reworded and added regarding corrective action process, and then section 12 is the definitions, and that's pretty much self-explanatory. So at this time, what I'm proposing, I would like for y'all to do, is if you read over anything, and you have suggestion, changes, modifications, if you know something that maybe works better, you know, than what we've got here, let me know, because this is just an open slate right now, for us to make the changes needed, and to get a handbook that is currently up to date with all the requirements that we need to have, and hopefully present it again in July or August and have it finalized. I think you put out, having comments to me by July 10th, I believe, so then that way we could add it to the next work session after that.
Done a great job on this.
Well, thank you. It was, it was interesting, especially when you start reading other cities' handbooks and stuff, a lot of it, I was like, well, this ain't ever, like, gonna ever apply to us, but then some of it was like, you know, in the future, we may be in a situation where we need to do some type of budgetary adjustment, and we need to have it in our handbook, that we can adjust someone's work hours due to budgetary, you know, constraints and stuff.
I have a question.
Kathy, who currently manages FMLA?
I do.
Okay, so an employee would bring their medical documents to you for review?
Correct. So the way it is, is if an employee has, knows they're going to be out more than three days, they're required to fill out, it's called a City of Hyrum Documentation, where they take it to their supervisor to let that supervisor know immediately that they have to be out more than three days, due to their own illness, or they're caring for someone else's illness, or birth of a child. At that point, once that employee approves, or the supervisor approves it for that employee, they come back to me, and I give them the rest of the documentation, that I fill my section out, and that they take to the doctor of the treating individual, and it's completed and submitted back to me. And that documentation has to be submitted prior to the start of that leave. Sometimes we just have individuals that may be out sick for three days, and then they go out the fourth day, and that still qualifies them for FMLA, and we still have them fill out the city paperwork, just so their supervisors are aware that this may be, just in case, an ongoing issue later on, so they've already done that, just so that way they're prepared if they have to take paperwork to the doctor.
Okay, and is that how most cities handle it? It's not done by, like, a third party?
If they have an HR department, most time it's handled inside, because you have to track it for retirement also, so if an employee is out on FMLA or anything, you have to keep those records separate, so when they retire, you can pull that information and notate when they were out on FMLA or anything during their employment.
Just seems like a lot of hands on sensitive medical documentation.
The only medical documentation comes in my office, in my office only. The supervisor's form just strictly is, I'm requesting these days off for medical for myself, or my spouse, or birth of a child, and then the employee signs it, submits it, and then gets a signature from the supervisor.
And then you make the-
Huh?
And I'd much rather you have it than you have it.
Yeah, and the only reason we do the signature page is that was put in place a long time ago, just so we know that the supervisor has been notified, and they're not bypassing their supervisor and trying to schedule something off without the supervisor knowing if they're already scheduled for the next, you know, like PD does their rotation schedule, that they'll know in advance, okay, this person's going to be needing off, and we need to readjust that schedule.
Okay, and then you make the decision whether it's approved or denied?
The only thing, I don't ever really approve it or deny it, as long as the paperwork is submitted and that doctor has signed off that it's a requirement, and it meets the requirements of FMLA. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really cut and dry, as far as, as long as it falls into the criteria of FMLA, that the individual that they're dealing with or themselves, and the reasons, and it's been approved by the supervisor, and the doctor states that it's a medical necessity. Cliff had the paperwork when he was out for his surgery for his back, and I was the only one that ever saw the paperwork, and the doctor, actually, for all the updates, emailed them directly back to me, or Cliff would email them to me.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you.
Discuss the renewal of the Hotel Motel Excise Tax Distribution Agreement between the city and Old Town Hyrum Business Association. Jody?
Do you have in your packet what is the current contract that Old Town Hyrum Business Association is under? It is that time now where you need to consider distribution for the coming year. Barring any objection to it, I would assume that we would be talking about the same type of agreement for the coming year as well. And we have April, who is the treasurer for Old Town Hyrum Business Association here. If she would like to do, to speak to the council, she can, but this will be the time to ask them questions. She did provide me with both what their expenses were for the current year. I did not see the dates of the twos and froths, from this date to this date, but it's for the current year's contract, correct?
Correct.
And then also, with a proposed expenditure for the coming year. So if you would like to take one of those and pass it down? You can have that, too. I'll give Wade, Ms. April, to speak on it, or to be asked questions.
Good evening. As you can see on the first page, I think you all just have the current budget, is that what you just gave them?
Current year's expenditures, and they have your proposed-
Okay. So if you could see, like, on the, what we actually spent on billboards, digital ads- So if you could see, like on the, what we actually spent on billboards, digital ads, the event coordinators, we spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on billboards and digital ads. This year, we spent, as far as the event coordinators, like sixteen thousand dollars. The screen division, which is like movie ads, that's twelve thousand. The content creator, she does like social media, she goes around to the business downtown Hiram and do videos. Then we spent eighty-two hundred on promotional items, that's, that range from like getting flyers for the meetings for the city. We spent like, if they needed, if you all needed anything for any event, those are the extra promotional items. The five thousand dollars for the mailers, and we spent eighty-four hundred roughly for the printing of like t-shirts for different events. Going forward, we saw where we can, where's room for improvement? We, you know, after doing a couple of events, we did surveys where a lot of people said that they either saw it on the movie ads, or they saw it, you know, through the mailers. So we wanna do like less billboards and digital ads, even though the board that you see going downtown Hiram, we have that set every month, we'll continue to do that, but we'll be like strategic with, when it comes to like the digital board that's over by Walmart.
Thank it's so much exposure over there, it really does.
You've seen the board?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, 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 I think so too. But I think at first, we were doing like, just not Walmarts, but we was doing like AdWords and different, you know, Smyrna and different places like that, so we'll keep it more of Walmart and the downtown Hiram billboard. The one that's downtown is not digital, so it's stand-free, so we'll keep, we'll continue to have that. The proposed budget, if you can see that for the billboard and digital ads, kind of cut it down a little bit to like fifteen thousand. The event coordinators, it may, we, I said twenty-five thousand, but I think we may, as, as when we started doing more events with the city, like partnering with you all to do more events, that may be a little higher, because we could actually, you know, for the city, we can hire event coordinators for you all too. The screen, the, the movie ad, I said, we said about ten thousand. The content creator, twenty-one thousand still. Promotional items, seven thousand. The mailers, five thousand. Printing of service, seven thousand. And then I put just reserved for like, when I contacted Kathy this time about the Red White and Boom, she listed some items, so if we just have like a little money set aside for things like that, that you come up and you say, hey, I want signage, like she wanted, you know, you all wanted the like the little bracelets or necklaces. As long as we can put something on there that says like, the city are hiring advertising, we still stay within the promotional part of it, so. And we appreciate you all giving us this opportunity to actually take the money and promote the city. We have enjoyed it, we have come up with different challenges, but I like the way that the city in, in Old Town Hiram got together and worked through those challenges. On behalf of Tyrone, I'm gonna read something. Over the past year, the Old Town Hiram Business Association has proudly supported and promoted a variety of events throughout Hiram. In that time, we have gained valuable insight into Hiram and parting communities, learning how to effectively connect and engage them. We've experienced both successes and challenges, and with the city's partnership, we've navigated through them together. Our efforts have extended beyond event promotion. We've worked to spotlight and celebrate the city, Hiram itself. We sincerely thank the city for its continued support and collaboration, and we look forward to building on this strong partnership in the future. We appreciate you all.
I have a question. Kathy, the Red, White and Boom at the billboard, were you able to get in touch with her to find out if they could do that? Remember in the meeting when we talked about the billboard up for, by Walmart?
Yes, I saw her stuff, and she's, I don't know which billboard, but.
It's gonna be on the Walmart, yeah.
But it's gonna be after, or. After Juneteenth.
Yes, so.
I don't know who designed that one, but that was, the Juneteenth one was really nice.
It was really nice. Only thing about it, we had to like tweak it a little bit, because when the billboard has to be a certain specs, and trying to like enlarge it for the billboard, so we changed it a little bit. I wish I had, I have it on my phone, the picture of the new, I can send it to the city so you can see it. But we actually added like the picture of the Nashville Nation, we added her picture on there, so we have visibility of the live music. That's, so it's, it's still really nice.
It is.
Yeah.
April, I appreciate all the hard work that you all have, you know, put forth. I would like to work on getting, or working with you guys towards an event coordinator. I know Tyrone mentioned that on a prior meeting. Let's see if we can really partner and, you know, Akba somehow help the city with an event coordinator or event planner.
Definitely, we definitely can do that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, April.
All right, you're welcome.
Kathy, you're on again. Discuss proposed changes to supplemental insurance coverage for employees.
Good evening again. Currently, the city covers with Lincoln life insurance through NFP, the long-term disability, the short-term disability, and the city-paid life insurance through Lincoln. Also, the employees have the option of purchasing additional life insurance for them. In the past several years, dealing with Lincoln has been a very difficult transition, because we have to send all of our new hire information to NFP, and then it's submitted over to Lincoln. We don't get what the premiums are for the life insurance and the short-term disability and everything till later, so I've been looking around. As you know, we've changed all of our medical dental and vision over to GMA. So I've been requesting quotes and everything on what it would cost us if we decided to change to another carrier. And Colonial Life has been working with several of our employees that we do payroll deductions for, and they came across with some of the best pricing as far as what they could offer for us and how it would be cost savings. The first thing was the short-term disability. Currently, it costs the city approximately, and this is based off of salaries. So it currently costs the city approximately a thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and nineteen cents on the census that I sent them back when we started getting quotes. Off of the exact same census, Colonial cost for that same census would only cost us eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen dollars a month, which is a savings of thirty-six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents a year. And that's for changing from Lincoln, like, short-term disability over to Colonial. The advantage of the Lincoln also, when it comes to their short-term disability, in the flyer that you received, it gives you the breakdown of the coverage for short-term disability, and, let me get to it here. The short-term disability actually pays better than our current plan does. The maximum that we currently get for short-term disability is seven hundred and fifty a week. That would increase to a thousand a week for employees at a lesser cost per employee. In addition, the accident elimination period and the sickness elimination period currently is fourteen days before short-term disability will kick in. Their policy kicks in after seven days, so it shortens it in half. So an employee that is out due to accident or illness, their disability would kick in that much quicker. So at that point, we do allow PTO supplement to, for their income, but by increasing that amount also, at no additional cost to us, it allows them to bank that short-term disability compensation that we use for PTO to bring it up to what their normal salary is, it'll let us carry it out a little bit longer, and that helps out for the employees that haven't been here as long.
Kathy, what's the maximum benefit duration for Lincoln? Do you know?
I can tell you that right now, hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
It's twenty-six weeks for Colonial, and it is, for Lincoln, it's twenty-six weeks also, it's the same. Yeah, I think that's pretty much the standard rule. The other part of that is the long-term disability, because normally, after you've been out on short-term disability, it kicks into the long-term disability, which covers an employee all the way to Social Security age. With long-term disability, that is not really a benefit that, since I've been here, that any of our employees have ever even tapped into. So we're paying approximately now seven hundred and six dollars and thirty cents for an employee's benefit that they really don't utilize or see. My suggestion is that when I started talking to these insurance companies, what could we replace it with that would be something that would be beneficial to the employee? So they have what is called an accident plan, which you have a copy of in your packet. Changing to the accident plan not only provides a consistent charge per employee, because your long-term disability once again is based off of salary, so that, what you're paying is always gonna change based off of salaries and stuff. You're gonna be generating currently an expense of five thirteen twenty-four with a yearly savings of two thousand three sixteen seventy-two by changing this over to an accident plan. And then, like I said, it doesn't have any changes as far as salaries go. The accident plan, it's a group accident plan, there's no pre-existing condition limitation. It includes under, in the policy, that, you know, lists everything, but when you're looking at the packet for the plan, which looks like this one here that was attached, you'll see that it covers the accident coverage benefits, all of that is included in this plan for employees. Then it goes to the recovery plus package, which is on page, I don't have a page number. Anyway, it's this section here, the recovery plus package, that's also included in there. In addition, is the gunshot wound policy, which is on the next page, which is available amounts. Ours is the five thousand amount that's paid for a gunshot wound to the employee. It's payable once per covered accident, and then no more than once in a twenty-four-hour period, which, so we hope that doesn't happen, but that's the way it's worded. The benefit provides on and off-job coverage regardless of the coverage type of the rest of the plan, so even if it was an accidental shooting at, on hunting, you know, hunting or something. So that's an immediate benefit. And then the last one is the building benefit, where it talks about the benefit increases, the benefits longer, the coverage, the longer the employee has it. So as a city-paid benefit, replacing the long-term disability, they're already gonna have between thirteen and thirty-six months after the first year, a five percent increase of benefit coverage, and then it keeps going up, so that's added in there. The other part of that is the life insurance, the city-paid life insurance. You will see that currently, it, it does have a slight increase in our coverage right now, it's a three hundred, we go, we're gonna go from three hundred and eighty-four dollars and four cents on the current census to four hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents with Colonial. But the change in that is, they found out when they started trying to cost it out to it for us, or, because we have currently a thirty thousand dollar plan coverage for employees, and then a fifty thousand dollar coverage for management, they found out that nobody would bid it that way, because they had passed some type of law or something that if it's an employee-paid benefit, they cannot discriminate against the benefit, the employee based off of their position. So their rates are fifty thousand for everybody, and as you, as council, you also have the life insurance too, so that policy covers you. And the benefit here, where it talks about the life insurance, the one great thing about this plan too, with the life insurance, whether it's the city-paid coverage, or the employee that has the option to purchase additional coverage on themselves, their spouse, or their children, it is portability, has a portability clause. That means upon retirement, they can continue that insurance, or if they leave, for what reason, they can continue that insurance with them, and at the same cost it's currently costing them on their paycheck, or costing the city. They can continue those policies, which is huge, because anybody that goes from, I have in the past, I'd have a great life insurance policy, I'd move to another area or something and have to start back over, and if I was to go like right now and quit my job and have to get unemployed and get life insurance, you're eligible to have to get pre-qualified to make sure you're eligible, you know, evidence of insurability has to be in place and everything. So an employee would be able to at least keep life insurance on themselves if they chose to with this change over. The guaranteed issued amount, like I said, was fifty thousand, this is a two-year rate guarantee. It has the conversion policy also that gives you the right for an individual level premium whole-life plan, then in use by, without a proof of good health, so you can, they could change their current plan over to a whole life without having to have evidence of insurability. It has the accelerated death benefit, that an insured can advance up to seventy-five percent of their death benefit to a maximum of a hundred and fifty if diagnosed with a terminal illness, and given less than twelve months to live, and their benefit amount is discounted for that twelve months. All active employees working a minimum of twenty hours or more per week on a regular basis are, is also eligible. So this is a benefit we could offer employees that come in on a part-time status if they wanted. So that would open up, if they wanted to purchase life insurance themselves, they could do a payroll deduction, because this policy allows them to take it out themselves. The benefit reduction due to age, when you turn seventy, of course, your coverage reduces to sixty-five, and then when you turn seventy-five, it reduces to fifty percent. So that's pretty standard as far as that goes, I think, though it doesn't break it down as quickly as the Lincoln did. So that's the life insurance, but there's a savings right now, just to give you an example, of employees that they purchase their own life insurance also. For age band twenty-five to twenty-nine, they're currently paying point oh nine cents per thousand dollars coverage, and Colonial's offering it to them at point oh six. So it would be a savings to the employees offer, also that take out additional life insurance for themselves. The group accident policy we've covered, but in addition to changing from the long-term disability to the group life, it would be a savings along with the short-term. The life would be a slight increase, but it's an increase in coverage, so it balances out there. But there also, if we were to do business with them, they were, if, the last part of the packet here is a new policy that is being offered, and this is something currently that we don't have with our insurance. It's called the twenty-five tuned offer. It is a company that just has started, and they're only offering it to municipalities and construction and stuff like that, but it allows hearing tests to be done at no cost to the employee. They also provide the specialized earplugs based off of what type they do, so if they're at the gun range or stuff, they provide those earplugs for us. But if an employee ever suffers hearing loss, they will also cover the cost of hearing aids up to a certain percentage, which is a huge thing to have as a benefit. That's at no cost to us for the first year. They said that if you continue it, it's only a dollar twenty per employee after year one, but they also stated that it's a good chance that they may be able to grandfather a sin so we can get it for a couple of years at no cost. In addition, they're gonna throw in the Norton LifeLock Benefit Solutions for the employees, so that way they'll have, be able to help get protection, and the added little flyers in here for that. So, so we would like to see, as far as, you know, the insurance goes, I would love to be able to change over, this would not be effective till January first, but I'm wanting to prepare for open enrollment that happens in October. And then we also have to make plans to change everything over, get all the censuses updated to current employees and everything, but taking away the long-term disability, replacing it with the accident plan, I think would be a huge asset to what could affect employees immediately with that coverage, but in addition, it would also give us cost savings to the city, along with changing the short- the short-term disability. And then, of course, the life insurance is a wee bit more, but we're giving them a larger amount of life insurance for the employees. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Jody.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy. So if an employee wanted to file short-term disability, would they go through you or go through the company?
They come to me and get the paperwork and then I submit it to the company, because I have to do a salary sheet for them to go to the insurance company. So they, it's basically almost like, kinda similar to the FMLA paperwork. The insurance company provides us the forms and then the employee fills them out, has the doctor fill them out, they're expected to return today and all that, and then I attach all the salary information and send it to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have any consent agenda items?
Well, item number one, I would say I need guidance on what you guys are expecting on item number one. That was the distance requirements.
To revisit that.
Revisit that on another work session.
So the next work session?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I put that for the handbook as well, next work session. The hotel motel agreement, I'll just put that as new business because honestly, we're not gonna have any consent agenda then. So I'll do that, new business. And then the supplemental insurance, do you want that to coincide with the handbook of the next, next work session? Okay. That's it.
Okay. June 21st, Juneteenth event put on by the Hiram Rosenwald School and Museum at Grays Mill Park. June 28th, Red, White &amp; Boom at Grays Mill Park. July 1st, at 6:00 PM, regular session here in the municipal annex. Bob?
No. We don't have anything.
Daphne?
No.
Everybody that's going to the convention, drive safely.
Thank you. You too.
Drive safely.
Absolutely. And it's, since we're on record, the allowance that I have to drive is the same that I'm using to travel, so nobody come for me on that. But I wanted to take this moment to say thank you to our chief of police, just providing safety in his presence, our police department, for being at the No Kings event where, you know, people exercise their right to protest and it was done peacefully and it was done under the supervision of our chief who, I mean, people were just boasting and raving about how kind, how thoughtful, how his presence just reassured the crowd that it was okay to exercise that right, whether you were on this side or this side or vote for that or whatever your political affiliation, you made a difference and thank you.
Derek? Jody? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn to work this.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? 棄了[1780.21]